This morning, we have a workshop on the animal shelter. And I am going to ask Rebecca Bays if she would lead us in the invocation and Diana Finnegan in the, excuse me, the Pledge of Allegiance. My phone was ringing. Make sure everybody turns their phone off, please, on silence. And if you're able, please stand with us. If not.
Good morning, everyone. I left my phone on because the good Lord's going to call us and bless us today. If you would bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, we come before you today and we ask that you lead and guide us with the wisdom of how that you would want us to plan our community and be reverent to your word and that we would always recognize that your will be done. We ask that you look over the men and women of our county with the ones that have special needs with mental illness, the people that have these animals that sometimes they just, they're not sure exactly how they're going to feed them, but they love them dearly. They're their best friends. And so, we're looking on how we can have a plan of action for our community and how it's going to fit in with the animal shelters. So, we ask that you look at all these needs that we have before us and that you give us the wisdom and your will and your power. And we ask all this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Bays, thank you. That was a beautiful prayer. She had zero notice that I was going to ask her, so thank you for that. It came from your heart.
I also thought it was outstanding.
Yeah. Excuse me. So, thank you. Today, we have a workshop presentation for the new animal shelter conceptual design. And at this time, I'm going to throw it to Mr. Howard for his introduction of staff and the firm.
Sure. Would you like to roll call first?
Oh, yeah, I would like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Ms. Amy. Please.
This is a public workshop of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. It's 25th day of April, 2023. In attendance are Chair Ruthie Schleba, First Vice Chair Ollie Davis, Second Vice Chair Rebecca Bays, and Commissioner Diana Finnegan, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamondline.
Thank you. Mr. Howard?
Well, thank you. I think when we met back, actually, it's been about 90 days, actually, from our strategic planning session of January 25th. Seems longer than that. This was the year of make it happen, and a strategic priority was this animal shelter to either move it forward, vote it up, vote it down, but move it forward and actually have some dialogue. So, today, we did come back after guidance from the board, from the previously discussion back, I think, in November, December timeframe. So, Eric Head is going to present today the animal shelter workshop, video and a presentation. We also have our engineering architects of record here as well. I'm going to turn this over to Community Services Director Eric Head. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Excuse me. Well, we'd like to start out, we have a little video for you this morning, so I'm going to turn it over to Veronica to kick off a little video. Just to remind you, if you haven't been in the current Animal Services Shelter in a while, just a little reminder of what we're working with.
Mr. Head, is that on Facebook and Instagram, this video?
Not yet. We just finished that this week.
Very good. Thank you. And I know Miles did those shots, and it's kind of hard for me. I'm not an emotional person, but I could kind of feel something behind my eyes. So, I'm going to let you all do your presentation and then let the board ask any questions. If you would like to ask during the presentation, please interrupt and let them know. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'd just like to introduce, I have some folks with us here this morning. Charles Soam from Techoy Engineering is here, Miguel Martin Jr. from MLM Architects, and of course, Colleen Yarborough, you all know, from Animal Services Director, and Dr. Milo is here as well. And just a shout out to their staff, they do an amazing job over there, working and making the absolute very best of those conditions. So, slide one. So, if you remember, back in December, I believe, when the original presentation was done, you directed staff to go back, work with Techoy and MLM, and bring back two separate options. We have two options that we're going to show you today. One is an animal shelter building that has a total cost of $9 million with a total project cost of 12.5. And the second option is a total project cost of $9 million, which brings the building cost in at $6 million total. We're also going to see some alternatives. We're going to identify some of those alternatives that you can pick or choose from if you see something that you think should be a part of either one of those options. And then, later this afternoon, at the 1:00 meeting, you'll have an opportunity to provide that formal direction, vote on one of those design options with any alternatives, and of course, determine how it would be funded. Excellent. So, the current filter, current shelter we just looked at, you know, that includes buildings that you saw about 50 years old, another one was over 40 years old, and the third one is a little over 21 years old. So, they're housing those animals. Saw where the cats were, you know, based on the best research I could do there, that actually was one of the old administrative spaces. So, there never was actually any dedicated space for cats. All of that space, coming to 14,000 square feet, 68 dogs, 41 cats, the occasional pig, goat, or horse in the livestock area. And upper kennels, like I said, 1991, current administration building was built in 2002. Next slide. A few statistics. Animals impounded in 22, that's 3,485, of which 18, 94 of those were adopted, 461 reunited. And you'll notice in that bottom area there, 1,928 spade and neuters. Those core services obviously include foster, adoption, reunification, that's shelter medicine and vet services that they provide. That's a big focus on basic life-saving care, you know, and neglecting abuse cases, which you've seen. We're not competing with private vet care. These are the basic life-saving measures that are necessary. Next slide. So, let's go into the first building, first project, $12.5 million project cost. That is, next slide, the $9 million building. So, you see, this is the larger of the two, about total square footage of 24,450 square feet. That raises capacity to 110 dogs and 74 cats, larger staff areas. You'll see the amenities that this facility has over the $6 million. If you'll note in that blue box to the right, the $9 million shelter includes that additional office space, the additional cat space, the larger isolation kennels. That isolation kennel is not included at all in the $6 million version. It also has larger adoption and stray areas of, it adds about 667 square feet to each of those two large kennels you see in the middle. At the top of those, you also see that there are additional rooms added to those that you won't see in the other. Those are for food prep, cleaning and grooming and laundry for those animals that are in those kennels. As you're looking around the drawing, you'll see in the shaded areas, the alternatives, the add-ons. Veronica added a little paw next to the ones that are alternatives. Some of them, it's, I know it's hard, if you have a larger drawing, it's a lot easier to see it was included in your packet. It's a lot larger, so that you can see those. And we'll go over these alternatives in detail in just a few minutes. We'll have a slide specifically just for those. But basically, this building includes about 5,742 square feet beyond what the next building we're going to show you includes. Next slide. So, the $9 million building, where does that come from? That's all building. You'll see there, it's shaded in yellow to the right, that's the building construction costs. That doesn't include those other program costs that you see listed to the right, and that we have the permitting, site construction, contingency permits, all of those. And on the left, you can see the 24,450 square feet. That breaks down into the 74 cats and 110 dogs. Next slide. And this is where we get into the $9 million building alternatives. So, you can see the first two are included, the dog kennel isolation and quarantine areas included in this one, and it also includes the additional office space for staff. And then, what we've done is we've listed those options that you can match up on that drawing, but in this version, they're not numbered, but they're in priority order based on staff input and areas of need. And then, over in that far right, you'll see in the middle column, that's the actual individual cost for that option, and then the far right column, it just cumulatively adds as you go down in order. Obviously, one of the biggest, you know, the number one in both areas is the additional bulk storage. Storage is always an issue, dry storage for everything that they need, particularly food and other things. So, that's number one in both. The $9 million, let's move to the next slide. $9 million total project cost. That's the $6 million building. To keep the total project cost under $9 million, it lowers that building to approximately $6 million. You'll see on the right, this drops to an 18,708 square foot facility. Capacity drops to 90 dogs, 50 cats. And then, in the little red shaded area to the right in that box, you see what was removed. So, the $6 million shelter removes that additional office space, it removes some of the cat space, removes the isolation kennels completely. So, you only have the two primary kennel areas, and it removes that additional workspace that was at the top of those two primary kennels. And that was about 667 square feet at the top of each isolation kennel. Remember, that was the feeding areas, the food prep, the cleaning, and the grooming for the dogs. The clinic space stays the same, and the reception areas stay the same. But yeah, you can go to the next slide. This is where you see your total building construction costs listed on the right in yellow at the 5.8 million. And again, it lists those associated fees around the total project cost. And then, over on the left, you see the square footage, and then broken down into 50 cats and 90 dogs. Next slide. This adds those back into your priorities. So, you have, the number one priority at this point becomes the dog kennel and the isolation and quarantine, and then we get into storage, the education meeting space, et cetera. Same kind of slide, the cost is listed in the middle slide, in the middle column, excuse me, and the cumulative total off to the right. So, just a quick comparison of the two buildings together, the $9 million shelter, that's the 12.5 total project costs, total square footage, and you can see the comparison, dog capacity to cat capacity. Also, that $9 million has more space for staff and operations. And then, I will go on to the next, just a quick to show, and we do have a slide if you're interested. Basically, the site layout, you can see where the parking is, that's on yours as well. That's 491 off to the left, the entrance, and you see the basic areas for expansion down below the kennels, those boxes that are in white. And there's also expansion for parking off to the west side of the building and the storage areas off to the east side of the building, as well as the barn that's in that triangle yard in the middle. And then, just the last slide will show you the basic general area where that's located, a little bit larger, full out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, questions?
Yes.
I have one.
Commissioners?
Commissioner Davis.
Can you go back to the expansion slide?
Expansion slide, yeah.
Yes. Okay, so clearly, the two white boxes and the hash box at the bottom and the parking lot are all very easy to add on.
Yes.
Can you tell us about up in the core building? Because to my mind, sometimes it's more difficult to add to like core buildings. And so, there's the white box next to the left-hand parking lot, there looks like there's down, cursor down right there, those two pieces.
Yes.
What are, just go around and tell us what each of those are.
So, in the lower left, starting there, that's the clinic, well, the parking lot's the far left. So, you'll see, that's the parking area, that is additional clinic space that is also an option listed, so if you wanted to add on to the clinic. And then, the one directly above that part of the main building, that's the educational, what I like to call multipurpose space.
Yep.
Because you can use it for a lot, and that's directly off of the admin area. In the middle of the main building, where the blue is, that would be additional cat space. It could be expanded beyond the large, the $9 million version. And then, off to the far right, that shaded area, that's your Sally Port and storage. And they were asking what the Sally Port was, that would be where animal control, kind of a garage-style space, animal control can come in to drop off animals, safe way, but there's also considerable storage there as well and flexible space. Then off, keep going around, that is the barn in the livestock area. And one more around, that would be, and that could be built, while that's adjacent to the isolation and quarantine, that could be either. I mean, there's additional space for additional kennels, considerable, and if I can read it, it was in small print, apology, an extra 20, 30 kennels could be there. And then, again, on the bottom two of both of those main kennels in the middle can be expanded out as well.
Outstanding. Thank you. The primary question I want to get out to, but I'm glad you did the tour, just so everybody's clear on what all those are, is it seems like it's probably fairly easy to add those on later. If any of those are not easy to add on later, it would be nice to know that, but
Absolutely.
I'll let the conversation continue at this point.
Certainly.
Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Finnegan?
Well, a long time ago, when I toured with Colleen, thank you for the tour, Colleen, I promised her that I would, as a commissioner, try to get her everything that she wanted at a price we could afford, and I would only hope the layout I'm looking for her nods is good, is a good layout. I wouldn't know, that would be up to her. But I want everything in the extras, but I have to tell this word, I don't trust the numbers still, and I'll explain why. It's not, it's not my business to understand all the price per square foot of commercial spaces. I mean, we all could have opinions on what could be higher or adequate, but there are a few things that I do know about. And when I see on extras and how these were priced...
What page are you on?
Um, I don't have page numbers. This alternatives?
Yep, the alternatives for the $9 million slide, that's page seven.
Okay.
Excuse me, yes.
Well, either one's fine. The last one, transfer switch slash generator plug, that's not a generator for a building. That's a special plug that you put in, that you could bring a portable generator to, and then you have a transferred switch that's hooked up to the electrical and you switch it over. Even Eric, which I don't know how you know, you know the cost of this. The materials, I mean, could be a couple of thousand dollars, and if you hired a company and they made good money, I mean, maybe they're charging you six grand if they're making really good money.
Did you price the wire, the conduit, and all that? I mean, I just want to be clear that I do think it's high also, but when you're saying the materials are a couple thousand, we have to be careful about that.
Well, I understand the wire, but I mean, assumably, you're putting it by the building. You're not going to run it.
It would have to be in conduit, I'm sure, for...
Of course.
Yeah.
But even if you went high, $10,000, 15,000, I mean, we're a far cry from $45,000. I mean, you could run it on the other side of the property, you know what I'm saying? It's not going to be $45,000, so that's one. The other one, I mean, nothing, I mean, without specs, I mean, it's hard to price anything. I'm just talking about numbers here since, you know...
I just wanted you to just be, I just wanted you to, by just spouting out numbers, I wanted everybody to know, I wanted to know if you actually got prices.
Well, how do you get pric, I mean, there's no specs. I'm just saying, when they're that far off, you can't price anything with all the specs. And I, they can't price anything, and I understand they're probably going worst-case scenario until there's, you know, specs and drawings on everything, but I'm just saying, some things are so far off. The other that I would know something about would be on the adoption dog kennels. Now, you added the square footage for the food prep and I think it's laundry space, but on the sheet, the square footage went up between the two on those dog kennels from $355 a square foot to $42538 a square foot, taking out, minusing the square footage for the extra, which I'm not sure why it'd still go up. You know, I was thinking that was HVAC, which it's not, it's just mechanical air, which to me, am I right, you're talking outdoor air coming in with big fans, that's what I would consider mechanically air-conditioned.
Yes. Sorry, that is correct.
For the price.
Could you, excuse me, Commissioner Finnegan, could you tell us your name, please?
Miguel Martin Antonio, Miguel Jr. for short, MLM Martin Architects, architect of record.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I just, and you know, your math might be different, so I'm asking, I guess more than telling, I'm asking, I mean, are you assuming that that mechanically aired, which we're talking about fans coming in, I just don't see that being over $300,000 for each one. I mean, if you're talking about an engineered special HVAC system cooling for this, you know, animals, which you would have to do in a special way, but mechanical air, it's not going to reduce that temperature that much with just these big fans. I don't see that price, I don't see where you got the price for some...
Our price per square foot comes into play with more than just the mechanical systems. It also has specialty plumbing systems, given that this facility is still commercially governed. It is a dual waste stream scenario where we have grease separated from hair separation, so you have dual plumbing for sanitary.
And if I may, and I understand that, I understand, because the square footage for the dog kennels, even on the $6 million building option, is higher than the office space, and I understood because, you know, you're building the cages and the plumbing, but when I do the separation between the 355 and the 425, I mean, that's the difference, even when you take out that extra space, I mean, that's...
The extra space also houses specialized equipment for laundry, and we did factor that into the cost. The cost per square foot was also factored with published numbers that we received from periodicals, as well as industry data facilitating those, and that's why we tried to split out and not give you an overall square footage cost for the facility and actually break it down at what is anticipated.
Right. I, you know, I feel like I'm on at least in those two categories, so here's, I guess, my point of all of it, not to fuss about the numbers, but our goal later today is going to be taking a vote on how we want to move ahead on this. And I like all the extra options. I like the bigger facility, and I like the extra options, and why I bring up I don't trust the numbers is because this is public, and eventually, someone's going to bid on this, and I don't want anyone that potentially might bid on this to think that we all think that, okay, if we want X building, we think it costs X amount of dollars, and we think that all these add-ons are $3 million or $5 million. I want us, as a consensus, to go, yes, we want what we want, but we don't necessarily trust these numbers when we put it up.
The, the other one, I mean, nothing, I mean, without, without specs, I mean, it's hard to, to price anything. I'm, I'm just talking about numbers here since, you know.
I, I just wanted you to just be, it, I just wanted you to, by just spouting out numbers, I wanted everybody to know. I wanted to know if you actually got prices.
Well, how, how do you get pric- I mean, there's no specs. I'm just saying, when they're that far off, you, you can't price anything with all the specs. They, and I, they can't price anything. And I understand they're probably going worst-case scenario until there's, you know, specs and drawings on everything. But I'm just saying, some things are so far off. The other that I would know something about would be on the, the adoption dog kennels. Now, you added the square footage for the food prep and I think it's laundry space. But on the sheet, the square footage went up between the two on those dog kennels. From three hundred and fifty-five dollars a square foot to four twenty-five thirty-eight a square foot, taking out, minusing the square footage for the extra, which I, I'm not sure why it'd still go up. You know, I was thinking that was HVAC, which it's not. It's just mechanical air, which to me, am I right? You're talking outdoor air coming in with big fans. That's what I would consider mechanically air-conditioned.
Yes. Yeah. Sorry for, that is correct.
Could you, could, excuse me, Commissioner Finnegan, could you tell us your name, please?
Miguel Martin Antonio, Miguel Junior for short, M L Martin Architects, Architectural Record.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I just, and you know, your math might be different, so I'm, I'm asking, I guess, more than telling, I'm asking, I mean, are you assuming that that mechanically aired, which we're talking about fans coming in? I just don't see that being over three hundred thousand dollars for each one. I mean, if you're talking about a, a engineered special HVAC system cooling for this, you know, animals, which you would have to do in a special way, but mechanical air, it's not going to reduce that temperature that much with just these big fans. I don't see that price. I don't see where you got the price for, for something.
Our price per square foot comes into play with more than just the mechanical systems. It also has specialty plumbing systems. Given that this facility is still commercially governed, it is a dual waste stream scenario where we have grease separated from hair separation. So, you have double, dual plumbing for sanitary.
And if I may, and I understand that, I understand because the, the square footage for the dog kennels, even on the six million building option, is, is higher than the office space. And I understood because, you know, you're building the cages and the plumbing. But when I do the separation between the three fifty-five and the, the four twenty-five, I mean, that, that's the, the difference, even when you take out that extra space, I mean, that's
The extra space also housed specialized equipment for laundry. And we did factor that into the costs. The, the cost per square foot was also factored with published numbers that we received from periodicals, as well as, uh, industry data facilitating those. And that's why we tried to split out and not give you an overall square footage cost for the facility and actually break it down at what is anticipated.
Right. I, you know, I, I feel like I'm on, at least in those two categories, so here, here's, I guess, my point of all of it. Not, not to fuss about the, the numbers, but our goal later today is going to be taking a vote on how we want to move ahead on this. And I like all the extra options. I like the bigger facility and I like the extra options. And why I bring up, I don't trust the numbers, is because this is public. And eventually, someone's going to bid on this. And I don't want anyone that potentially might bid on this to think that we all think that, okay, if we want X building, we think it costs X amount of dollars. And we think that all these add-ons are three million dollars or five million dollars. I want us, as a consensus, to go, yes, we, we want what we want, but we don't necessarily trust these numbers when we put it out to bid. I want us to get as much as we can get for a very fair price. So, in my efforts of saying this, it's not to say we can't move ahead with this. I'm saying, let's move ahead and try to get the biggest building and the most options. But understand, I think that we could do this at a better price. I, I don't know how it goes out to bid. Steven, we're going to put a cap, like we're bidding up to this amount. Give us your best bid. I guess that's what I'm after. I don't want this to be so pie in the sky. I want people to go back and go, these commissioners realize what things cost. And if I want to win the bid, you know, maybe I'll bring my numbers down. It's just more because this is a public meeting, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
To point these things out.
Well, Mr. Howard, one moment, please. I, I understand what you're saying. I actually have a couple of questions when it's my turn to do that, to go over that. But it is, I, for twenty-eight years, we've bid on government contracts, as I'm sure a lot of us up here have. But it will be a blind bid. It'll be three bids, not if they want the job, not all, you know, I'm saying three. It could be ten. Who knows? I'm hoping for three, because then it would be more competitive. But if the, say there were three or four, they're not all going to come in at twelve million, because they're not going to get the job. It's a blind bid. So, I do appreciate that. I hope that the staff is hearing that when it goes out to bid, that we all are very conscious and making sure that we're not going to be buying a three thousand dollar coffee pot like government does. We, we, we do have to be conscious of every penny that we spend and that we get the most, so that the staff is working in safe conditions and that we have the most square footage. So, I, I totally understand where Commissioner Finnegan is coming from. But I'm hu- I'm also kind of sh- you know, we don't want the lowest, lowest, cheapest, because they always come back with change orders and then you're on the hook and then you have to keep paying that person. But we want to make sure that we get qualified bidders and that they, it, it, it would be a blind bid, correct?
Correct, and actually, obviously, this is a strategic importance project for this board. My full attention will be on this. There's a variety of techniques you can use in the purchasing arena. I haven't talked to staff about that. There's a variety of ways, but, but we hear you loud and clear. So, we're going to be all over it and ensure that we're not, they're not inflating these prices. So, we're, we're all over it and thank you for your support. And I, I fully support this too. I think you've got a once opportunity to get this right. You don't do these that often. But staff, I'm confident that we'll, we'll get this where we need to get it done.
And Commissioner, if you, just to come in on what you said, we've hired this company. We could possibly go with the lowest and not have change orders, because if the bid is written to such good specifications, I know you're hearing me, there shouldn't be a lot of change orders. I mean, really, unless we change or Colleen comes back and says, oh, some, something is not right, you know, we would have to take it back to you and change the spec. So, if it's, it's written well, I don't see a lot of change orders.
I, you have a, a lot more confidence than, than I do because government situations. Commissioner Bays and then Commissioner, are, are you done? I'm sorry. Yes. And then Commissioner Davis.
I'm just glad to see this come forward. I like the presentation. There's not a lot for me to add on. I like Commissioner Finnegan's position as far as making sure that we're getting the best that we can for the dollar, that we're not being exorbitant just because it's government dollars. I know that Commissioner Schlebal has been working on this now for two-plus years, and I'm glad to see it's moving forward. And I'm looking forward to a vote later today, and I'm going to hold our administrator to the fire.
You to the fire. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I liked your three thousand dollar coffee pot analogy. So, none of us want to spend more than we have to. But there will be value engineering when all of this starts to move forward. And that's where we start seeing the specifications and all of that. And staff, I think is, I feel confident in Mr. Howard and his staff. And actually, after watching that video, once again, I want to say thank you for persevering in the current facility. We are going to get this done. And I too would like us to do the larger option and also talk about the add-ons. We had discussed add-ons being funded by donations. And I, it's, it's really short-sighted for us to do anything smaller than the, the bigger option, in my mind.
Thank you. We're in that situation with courthouse right now.
And, yes, exactly. And I will say one other thing about that. We have a hoarding problem. Beautiful, beautiful prayer this morning, Commissioner Bays. The mental illness with the hoarding and all of that, the demographics of this county are changing. We are getting economic development here. Things are going to change. Giving the staff what they need to prop, to actually be efficient and safe and rehome more animals will really help the shelter be a lot more efficient. And so, to my mind, as we reduce hoarding cases and we become more efficient in that shelter, that actually may, what's planned, may actually last us fifty or sixty years. Because even as we grow as a county and perchance the pet population can, continues to go up, if we have less coming in as a percentage, then it all works out in the end. So, I think it's very, it's far-sided and good planning to go for the larger one.
Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Head, I have a few questions for you. One, you know, good luck to the men if they want to use the men, men's room right now in the, uh, current animal shelter.
It's just a little obstacle course.
I, I want to, just my notes from the video nineteen ninety-one, you know, shelf life of buildings, twenty-five years. This is thirty-two years plus. We're really fifty years. I know twenty years ago, Commissioner Jim Fowler had proposed about moving the shelter to exactly where we're, you know, we're, we're going to move the shelter to. And I wish he had gotten it over the finish line, because it would have been very, very affordable and we wouldn't be dealing with, again, these prices that we're looking at for switches. I want to say that prisoners, the worst of the worst prisoners have better accommodations than our staff and our animals and the most vulnerable animals. Hear that again. The worst of the worst prisoners have better living arrangements than our staff's office space. Uh, it's just to me, we should be ashamed as a county that we have allowed this, that we have ignored our staff, ignored the shelter. I have been pushing this since November of twenty twenty. May twenty twenty-one, I got a three-two vote. I got the literal, literal stuffing kicked out of me for six months. So, I couldn't be prouder of this board and that we are going to be the ones that get this over the finish line. And, you know, I know not everybody's a dog and cat lover, but I would hope everybody is a human being lover. And I just can't thank our staff enough, our veterinarian, Colleen, animal co- control. I mean, you're taking animals without any kind of safety net into this, into the surgery center, by the way. So, let's just bring some rabid thing through, right into the operating room. So, um, just, it just is mind-boggling to me. So, thank you. I do, um, I've got like eight questions for you and I'll just go through them. Uh, the storage shelter right now, is there A C out there?
In the storage area?
Yeah.
I do, I do not believe so.
Okay.
No, there is.
There is? Okay. I want, I want to make sure, because I know the other one had a, a rodent problem before. Yes.
Oh, yes, in the, in the storage area, yes, thank you.
Very good. Okay, so, yes. I want to piggyback on Commissioner Finnegan's comments that, thank you for this. Thank you for doing what we asked and coming in the nine million. I know there was a communication error and you were following, can I say slow-walking techniques? I don't know. You were following some, some agenda that isn't our agenda here. But on the nine million dollar shelter, the square footage is, it, it, it's about three hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents per square foot. But on the six million dollar shelter, it's three hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty cents a square foot. So, I was just curious, kind of the same thing you brought up about the kennels, you know, the, the, it's the same quality, same schematics, but there's a different price. So, I just didn't know if you wanted to answer that or get back to me or
Introduce myself again, or?
No, we got you. Thank you, sir.
The, the difference in the square footage cost is basically the average of what was added back in. Okay, so you have more expensive areas for clinic areas. You have more, uh, for the kennel areas, you're going to have a little bit more cost because of the added plumbing.
Okay.
All right. It's not, uh, just standard, just throw back the same square footage, because it was averaged over the overall.
I get it. That makes sense.
So, if you're targeting specific areas to add back in, that's where the flux comes.
So, the, the, the hospital area is, the kitchen area is the, the, okay, that makes sense. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I would like to know that, are there things not included in the total project cost that's not listed here?
Correct. Um, I think we discussed, there are furniture fixtures, equipment, computers, related security equipment, those sorts of things are not included in this anywhere on.
So, uh, later in our discussion, I would suggest that we probably put that in next year's C I P. And because, you know, this isn't going to be built in a year, so we'll have some time to build that up also. That would be my suggestion. Um, excuse, excuse me?
Sorry, I got wrong paperwork. I have two of the big, of the little ones.
Is the fencing shown around the yard area included in the pricing?
Yes, all the various yards that you see designated, all of that fencing is included in this pricing.
Very good. Thank you. Yes. What kind of expansion is planned for the, in this design? Fu- future expansion?
Yeah, you can pull up that last slide again. And just when we went through it with Commissioner Davis, you can see all of those areas that are shaded in white and, of course, the two white boxes, all of that is future. As well as, depending upon the options that ultimately get funded, your education and, of course, your storage and Sally Port on the right, additional cat space. And then there is even still some, I did see a little spot of empty woods there to the south of the clinic. There is still additional land space that could be utilized at some point in the future.
Very good. Uh, so, additional, there's room for additional fifty kennels and twenty-four more cat condos, which, by the way, uh, we have received from an anonymous source for the catio, forty, four hundred thousand dollars dedicated just to the catio. I can't thank these people enough for that. So, um, very exciting. Can the county, this is for Commissioner, uh, excuse me, for county attorney, and I know the answer is yes, but I want to hear her say it, because it is illegal. But the impact fee, there is no impact. We're moving one shelter to another and we're discontinuing a shelter, so there's actually no impact. We have impacted, uh, the county for fifty years. So, you, we have almost, um, what was it, sixty, seventy thousand dollars, not, and then ninety-two thousand dollars for impact fees. So.
I, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't make the decisions related to what impact fees can be.
So, can a county waive the impact fees and permitting fees legally?
I'd have to, I'd have to look into that. I, I wish I would have known that question was coming, because I, I don't know if we can waive our own impact fees. I don't.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into that. That's an, that's an option we'll look at.
When I'm telling you, there is no impact fees. There is no impact. We've already had the impact. We're moving it. So, um, I just wanted you to be on a, a high alert for that, because I'm going to just keep banging the drum for that, for the impact fees and the permitting fees. The hurricane rating for this building, write now what you're proposing.
Category two.
Very good. Does this plan include the sidewalks?
Yes, I double-checked with them yesterday. All the sidewalks around the building are included.
And the architecture and engineering firm answered my question about how are the square footage prices determined? And I appreciate that. And I appreciate, this looks like a fantastic building. Um, I think that is it for me. My questions, um, is there anything else from the board? No? Yeah?
There are certain things that, I mean, I think make sense. Colleen would know better. Uh, a canopy over the sidewalks, I mean, it's kind of down on the list that, that seems like that would be pretty necessary. Again, the elevated price for a transfer switch, I mean, if we're putting it, I don't know whether medicine, I'm assuming the medicine's kept in the clinic? Because I know that was a problem before. It would be nice to, for them to have some sort of a generator, at least for the clinic, you know, at go-time. So, they're not, I mean, I assume the medicine's pretty expensive and whatever, whatever the needs are in that clinic, they're probably, um, I'm trying to, that's where, that's where surgeries are too, emergency surgeries. I mean, that's just me as a commissioner. The experts would know better. They're shaking their heads, yes. It just seems like, I mean, if we're, if we're going with that price, we might as well get them what's going to be most useful to them. So, like I said, I, I see a lot of these. I don't think it's going to cost this much. Um, I don't know if certain things we want to roll out and throw in the, in the price, but Eric, maybe it's okay with the board that, I, I don't, I don't know. These are just things that make sense to me. I don't know how we, when we price it, if we want to include some of these things, you say, for extras. But I do have a question about the extras. I don't know at this point if they need new medical equipment, more medical equipment, more, more machines. Is that part of the extras? I know we need security and phones and computers and
There is, and, and of course, you know, moving into a new building, you're going to want to make sure you have sufficient equipment and all of that. That's why I mentioned earlier, equipment, furniture fixtures, equipment, computers, security, all of that stuff is not included in the price. And then your suggestion at putting that into the C I P, that could be a separate expenditure that we could put into the budget process, because the building will be a while getting built. Will be in another budget cycle by then. So, we can make sure that we have all of that necessary equipment just included within the budget and we'll be able to control all those costs.
Do we have a number yet?
Approximately, I would say, it's, it's an estimate, about three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand.
That's with the extra equipment and everything?
All of the equipment.
Okay.
Thank you. And are you done?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
What's the current total on donations? Because that's going to probably get us pretty far down that extras list, especially if Representative Mizulo kicks in the half million he promised.
I have it.
You have it? Awesome.
So, it looks like what we have
I don't have it.
I asked for it, uh, yesterday. It looks like we have three million, four hundred and two dollars, three hun- sorry, three million, four hundred and two thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars collected. Expended has been nine thirty-two, two forty-nine, which leaves us with two million, four hundred and sixty-nine, nine hundred and forty-six dollars, not including a pledged five hundred thousand dollars.
Then we're getting everything on the list. On my map.
One would think.
And, you know, this doesn't include any commercial property that hasn't been sold yet, that we, this, the previous board said that will go towards the animal shelter. I also have several in the million-dollar price range that, once we break ground, these people are writing us checks. But they will not write a check until we break ground. So, I'm not even worried about any of that, because what do we have without a plan, without a fundraiser? What did you say, three-point-three?
Three-point-four is from the donations and the surplus land that's been sold, but expended already has been nine hundred and thirty-two thousand of that. So, right now, we're looking at about two-point-four million.
Yeah, that hasn't been spent. That is
Or allocated, excuse me.
Yeah, and when we go out for bid
Encumbered would be the
Yes, thank you. When we go out for bid, that nine hundred thousand dollars, we make sure, that's a hypothetical. And you can, i- if we hire the right contractor, they will have an onsite supervisor. That part of that money is to cover that, correct? That is, that is the construction cost.
Construction management.
Construction management. Thank you. And we, that is going to be something I'm going to hammer, that whoever gets this bid has to have that onsite, because that's an additional hypothetical worst-case scenario. has to have that onsite because that's an additional hypothetical worst case scenario. So that is very important. We get the right contractor building this site. So, thank you. Yes, yes, ma'am.
I also want to just, um, point out that how many acres is the current shelter?
Then I do not have.
Roughly? Ten, fifteen? Three, okay.
Three, four acres.
That's really prime property though, as Immerness Airport and Air Park grow, Business Park grows. That is ridiculously prime property that we own.
Yes.
And we can either build something on it and lease it, or we can sell it, either one that is coming back. So I want citizens to hear loud and clear that these are making, this is a really good financial decision long term.
Absolutely. Thank you. Commissioner Bays, wanna, anything else?
Only residents can surrender animals, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then as far as, um, surgeries? If somebody has their animal picked up by, um, the sheriff and it's not been neutered or spayed, are we doing that service for them?
Generally, yes. Colleen?
Hello.
Hi, I'm Colleen. Yes, so they, uh, a citizen who comes in, whose pet does not have a current unaltered license, they are given two options. They pay a heavy fee slash fine, which comes about roughly to three hundred and ninety-five dollars to be able to get their pet out unaltered one time. It's kind of a get out of jail free card. Well, without the free, for one time. If that pet comes back to the shelter, all bets are off. They're gonna have to pay for it to be spayed or neutered. Their other option besides that is to pay for the spay and neuter, to reclaim.
And do you charge the same as the private sector for that?
No.
If somebody's pet has gotten loose and it's picked up, why wouldn't we charge them the same as?
There is a return to owner fee. That is fifty dollars, and then we pay for spay and neuter. Which is on a scale of how much they, but we're also not in competition with the private sector.
Well, I guess that's my issue. It's like, I, I feel like if somebody's animal's gotten loose and they're not, you know, and it's not been spayed or neutered, that becomes another issue that we end up potentially with animals in our shelter and either they are going to have to give proof that they're taking it to the private sector or if we're providing that service for them, they should be paying the same amount as what it would cost in the private sector. I just don't think we shouldn't be discounting that.
That's something to go on your next agenda because she does have a valid point with that. Because then you're not undercutting the local veterinarians, but then they, if they want, I, if you had a choice of a two hundred dollar discount, they're gonna pick the two hundred dollar discount every time. And that is taking time and money out of your budget. So, um, very, I think that's a valid point, but that's for a discussion for another day. But, anything else, Commissioner Bays?
How many, um, breeders do we have in the county? Do we monitor that?
We have a running list that Animal Control monitors.
And are they required to, what, are there any restrictions?
Any citizen who owns more than ten domesticated animals has to have a kennel license. And then they are, it's a kennel registration with an emergency plan.
And then if they have them up for sale? As, do there, is there a plan, like, do they have to say? The times that I've purchased dogs, uh, you pay a higher fee if you want to keep one that does, if that's not been spated or neutered versus one that they have spated or neutered by the time they, you know, you sell it.
Animal Control is the legal side, the enforcement side, we are the housing side.
That's my issue, that's my concern, is that if we actually have breeders that, especially on more the, you know, the Pet Smarts, that type of, you know, of breeding and they're selling them, are they having them spated or neutered before they go out to the public?
So Laura Peck, I'm Animal Control, the Sheriff's Office. So our ordinance, the, the last time we updated our ordinance, what we found in years prior was that breeders were purchasing what we required as a breeder's license, which was a lump sum, but then they didn't have to individually license each unaltered animal. So we changed it so that anybody with ten or more animals, whether they're sterilized or not, if there's more than ten, we want to know those locations so that we can monitor during emergency events. They need an emergency plan, but more importantly, every animal on the property has to be licensed. The license difference between sterilized and unsterilized is significant. So every animal on the property, unsterilized, is a seventy-five dollar license fee. That's something that we're, we've spent months blanketing to make people aware this is required. It's citable if you don't comply and they're required to come into compliance or be fined. In addition, if someone is advertising animals for sale, by state statute, they have to have health certificates. If they don't, that's again, even can be a criminal offense if they're selling without. We can't force them to sterilize puppies and the license requirement does not take effect until the animal is four months old. So that's kind of a gray area in both the statute and the ordinance. I don't know that I can give you a firm answer on whether they're required to be there breeding. We can monitor certain aspects, but we can't force them to sterilize those puppies. Until they're four months old, we, we don't have authority to step in and say sterilized, unsterilized.
And on average, what do we collect in animal licensing fees?
Last year, I believe we got, uh, it was over a hundred and fifty thousand.
And what's it cost to register?
It's ten dollars for a county license for one year if they are altered. It is seventy-five dollars if they are not.
And how, and when somebody gets a pet, do they do that when they go to the veterinarian? Do they go, um, voluntarily to the county to do that? How does that, how do we monitor that?
For the licensing, the licensing they can pay online, they can pay by mail, they can come to the shelter and, um, multiple veterinarians in the community also sell them.
I think, yeah, I definitely paid with the vet when you get your yearly shots. Not when I get the shots.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner's? Anything else? Okay.
Great job, Eric.
Very good. Thank you. And thank you so much for coming in and that nine million dollar budget. I really appreciate it. It looks good. I can't wait to break ground. I'm being very optimistic that it's gonna happen today. But, um, I'm gonna put it out there in the universe, so. Anyway, um, at this time, I'm gonna open it to the public and I want to thank all of you that came bright and early this morning. I see some of my friends out there. I see people I know through the community and the support that you've given. But if you are not supportive, um, give me five minutes and I'll change your mind. So at this time, I'm gonna open it to the public and if you'd like to come forward, you get three minutes. Please fill out a green card. If you are with a group and you have a letter on file, you will get five minutes. I also ask that you address any comments to the chairman. Thank you. So at this time, would anybody like to come forward and have their three minutes?
Good morning, Commissioners, Madam Chair. Ernesto Rubio, Florida Department of Health. I'm your health officer. So my comments are right with, uh, Commissioner Finnegan in saying that your transfer switch really is a waste of money. You need to put a generator into the building. Uh, these animals have to be in there during, uh, our gray skies area. Remember that a lot of our citizens will bring their animals to the shelter. The shelter will also be out at the special needs shelter and our general pop shelters to take care of these animals. Uh, we also have to think about when, when we have a prolonged period of time after the storm, where we're not gonna have air conditioning, we're not gonna have electricity, these animals cannot be in those kind of environments for a long period of time. We need to take care of them, so there. I, I am glad to hear that we're gonna go with the expanded area. I was gonna give you a scenario that we, I, I know, you know, this year we did do a rabies alert in the Floral City area. Uh, I'm sorry to say that the requirements of when a rabies alert is issued, animals have to be quarantined for four months. Our, our facility cannot do that, so as a health officer, I had to speak with the animal shelter and tell them that, that if they could not quarantine them for four months, they had to destroy the animal. At, for, for, for public health, obviously, we have to do that. Don't want to do that, don't like doing that, but we have to, we have to do what we have to do. So I appreciate very, very much that you are gonna go with the larger shelter. The other thing I was gonna say is equipment, uh, is not cheap. I, I will tell you that. Just, I'm in the process now of changing my exam tables in my clinics, uh, those run about sixty-seven hundred dollars a table. So just so you get an idea that when you're talking about, I've learned in procurement, if you put the word medical in front of it, triple the price. Have a nice day. Okay, it just, it is the reality of where we live in, so pl- please do that. And the other, the last thing I will say is please, usually we don't do a lot of art or, or, or mon- uh, when I think, you, you know, sculptures or stuff like that in front of our buildings, we could, in, in the state level, we could only do it during construction. So I remind you, please make our buildings pretty. Our, our citizens like to come to buildings and, and show the government is a nice place to be in. So I remind you about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker? Come on, people. Next speaker?
Good morning, Diane Liptak, Hernando County. I have been working at this facility as a volunteer for, I believe, six plus years now. And when I first got there, I, I went because my sister was volunteering there. And, uh, I mean, it's always something I wanted to do when I retired. I walked into the place and it was like, really? My sister's working in this place? She, she was a nurse for thirty years and she's always been fastidious. And she said, you may do with what you got. And so we did. It takes more time for all the staff and all the volunteers to be cleaning. And, uh, you know, when you're cleaning, when you're trying to put an animal in a, in a, in a kennel and you've got cockroaches jumping out of the walls at you, or rats running over the rafters. And this is after it's been sprayed for. And then you're doubling up, you get it, you get a cruelty case and then all of a sudden you've got forty dogs. And the only way to house them is to take the kennels, put down the doors in the middle, which is what's, what's used for cleaning and, and isolating animals when you need to get in if, say they're dangerous or something, um, or new and scared. And all of a sudden, you've got an animal, a dog, on each side and there's no way to go. So you've got a dog living in a, a, almost a kennel size area at that point, um, until the cruelty case is solved. And we've had them go on for a year and better. So animals go crazy in this kind of a situation. They get dangerous. And the, the people here have been so good about being educated, staying aware, being focused on what they're doing all the time and trying to keep the place clean. I mean, it's just an impossible task when the, when the building is literally falling down on your head. And quite honestly, I was working in the cattery when we had a rat issue there with, that was so bad that we would sit and watch the rats watching us. You know, you'd open up a box and out they jump, so much for food or, or cockroaches in, in the, in the, the clean linens. You are wasting staff time doing a lot of things that should be standard operating procedure. It shouldn't be that way, you know, and, and there's, there's a risk, a liability risk of being bitten. You know, contagion, rats are not the nicest things to work with. And then you add the, the safety and security of the staff. If you don't make it big enough so that there's actually room for the situations that exist in the county, you're doing your entire community a disservice. And this is, this is real, it's gonna be stupid if after you get this started tomorrow, we have to put in a new bid for stage two, because by the time we get to that point, it's already well past the point when it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for volunteering and working in those conditions. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay, well, I'm gonna close this portion of Open to the Public. Thank you for being here. I have to assume all of you sitting out there are supporters and I'm just gonna pretend that you are, so thank you for being here. This is, wasn't something I wanted to take on as, as a brand new commissioner, but I thought in my naivety, I thought this would be a quick checkbox so I could, um, expand the airport and get manufacturing jobs here. Boy, did I, uh, you know, get hazed and, um, have I learned? I've learned so much over the last two years, two and a half years and, and I'm just gonna say it one more time. I'm so thankful for this board right now and who I'm sitting next to and, um, all successful businesswomen in their own rights and I, um, am thankful that this day, this hour, that we have, um, our citizens, our pets in mind, our staff as we move forward. So, thank you. Our next meeting will be today at one P M. in this building, this room right here at the Citrus County Courthouse, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at one P M. And I am going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.